We just need more information to really make decisions. But I will tell you, I think we have a good opportunity, not only on this issue, but on issues same like our schools, which of course are not controlled by the city. But, you know, as a city, we might have a way to communicate and have a louder voice at the table than we did other unincorporated we have. So maybe once we find the answer as to what is the law and what is required, maybe we can have a discussion with colonial implantation and say, "You've gone above and beyond the law," or "Do they really need to read this color?" Something, you know, they might be amenable to working with this. Wouldn't that be something new?
Thank you very much. All right. Starting a new city will be very time-consuming. How will you, if elected, balance your career with the time needed by the city council? Kevin Fitzpatrick.
You know, you do what it takes. You know, I'm the kind of personality where I get up early, I work hard until I get there at night. And I don't know how I practice my service on the board trustees of Dover Park, I'm the immediate past president at the same time as the more society and a coach at the mayor's smart trial team. I just did the multiple sclerosis bicycle ride. I fill up all my time, I always do fill up all my time. I also always meet my obligations and commitments. You can just do, you just buy the money to get it done.
Kevin Metz.
Yeah, well, that's true. I mean, there will be, I know that going into this is going to be a lot of work. And it's not unlike what I haven't done in the past. I mean, when I was going to law school, I worked all day long and then I would go to law school at night and then I'd come home and study till two o'clock in the morning and get up the next morning at seven and just do it all over again. And I did that for five or four years. And the way I was able to do that, quite frankly, is I just simply turned my TV on. I just cut my cable off. So you'd get amazed at what you can get done if the convention TV doesn't exist anymore. So I kind of see that coming up. The whole of life that, you know, well, if I win this thing, I'll be working through Christmas and if I lose, I'll take a vacation. So we're kind of wondering what we want to do.
So that's why she walked away from my yard so much.
I know. Very painful.
And what the cabinet and the people from Sandy Springs said, "This is a full-time job. This first year or two, you're going to be slammed. This is not a part-time, go to a meeting once a meeting out of obligation." And I thought long and hard about that. And I've mentioned before, I'm an acting esterbound. I don't, I'm not working full-time. I'm prepared to devote full-time to this, to this job. It really is a perfect time for me to do this. I'm prepared to devote all of my time to it. I've always been a very busy person too, and I think there's going to be a lot to be done these first couple of years, and I'm, I'm ready to do whatever it takes.
Thank you very much, Alan Cole.
I'm retired to run for the city. And this is a council-driven city, by the way. The mayor has no veto power, has no say except for breaking a two-two tie. So it's the council members who are going to make all the rules. Three council members make a forum. They have to be there. By law, they can't miss more than, I think, two meetings. So they physically have to be there. We're going to be working, we're going to be working long hours. We know that from the Sandy Springs and the Dunwoody and the John's Creek councils. Their consensus across the board is it's a forty to sixty-hour week sprayed up and for three to six months and then for two years on off. I've got the time. I love the good.
Thank you very much. Many individuals and groups oppose the city. Have you proposed helping them feel comforted being part of the new city? Kevin Metz.
Well, I think opposing the city was perfectly logical in a lot of ways. In fact, when I first found out this was what was going to happen, or this was something that was coming about, I was skeptical too. I mean, I've always been trained in another layer of government, another layer of taxation, another layer of bureaucracy. You know, the last thing we need is more government, honestly. But really, after looking at that, it came down to sort of a zero-sum game where really we're already paying these taxes and they're increasing our taxes. That's why I'm here, because my taxes keep coming up on my business that's right here and my home is right here. So, yeah, it's, it's a real problem, man. I think we're, for at least now, we can, we can come together, let the cities happen. We're going to have to come together now and, and make this, and make this work. And so that's why I'm throwing my head in the rain, because I've been complaining for a long time and I feel like I can do some, I can do a little bit of complaints myself. So, yes.
Thank you. Rebecca Chase Williams.
Well, I think the best thing we can do is to, is to make it right, you know, prove the naysayers wrong, make it the most successful city we can possibly be, and, and ask them to join in. I mean, I don't know why you want a city to be a naysayer after the vote, after the vote was in. We took the vote, votes counted, it wasn't maybe the eighty percent plurality that nobody had, but it was, it was a good margin, it was fifty-five percent. So when I'm on door-to-door, I'm talking to a number of people who are against the city. They're not against the city per se now, they wanted to work, they wanted it on the board. And I agree, there were legitimate reasons to oppose it. I mean, I was for it, but now we just need to get it right and make it so successful that people say, "I love living in Dunwoody."
Thank you, Alan Cole.
Well, the first statements were, "In the city, and you voted no or not, it doesn't matter, you're going to be in the city. You're going to be taking, paying."
I think in fairness, she probably should start.
We're all going to be in the city, we're all going to be paying money to the city. So we might as well have a say in the city. So that's it. Most of the people I've spoken with that voted no, it was really they didn't want change. There was so much rhetoric on both sides, it was hard to tell what was really going to happen when we informed the city. Most people understand that and they're on board, and they need to stand up and have a say. If they really don't like something, then I'm encouraged to them to show up to city council meetings and voice their opinion, step it up, do that. That's the only answer, because we're going to be in the city and we're all going to live here. So participate.
Answer the bell. Answer the bell, thank you. Okay. The next question?
I have it.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, my bad. Kevin Fitzpatrick.
Now, if you look at the vote for a corporation, it's, it's kind of a, the vote for pro-corporation voting District Four to the South was like, you know, twenty-four percent. The pro-corporation vote at the Montgomery Elementary precinct was seventy percent for the city with a very high turnout. All of District One was altogether a sixty percent plurality, and the further north we went, the higher the plurality for the city was. And I think that's because the further north we went, we had more people that interacted with Dunwoody, we saw how well the city was working at Dunwoody. Because it actually hit, all the people who were opposed to a corporation at Dunwoody are now wildly pro-city. I use this analogy, I mean, sometimes we have to get used to invent the best of things that are given shoes. For me, it was mail, pound, and ball mess.
Thank you very much. Other than choosing this site for Brookhaven City Hall, can you suggest one concrete project which will bring these neighborhoods together as Brookhaven? If so, what is it and how will it inspire citizens? And we begin with Rebecca Chase Williams.
A concrete project? Well, I mean, I go back to the many citizen forums that are going to have, where people can, can have a voice in the government that has really been lacking in Decatur County. I mean, I think that's going to really energize people. You know, when I've covered city, city council and meetings up in Dunwoody, people say, "Oh, everybody's, you know, victory and everything." I think it's great. I mean, I think people are having a lot of input and coming together and getting to know their neighbors and debating projects and sharing opinions. I think that's going to be extremely energizing. I heard a great idea today that one of the things that we can do immediately is buy old new trash receptacles in, in the parks to have seen immediate, you know, impact. And I thought that was a brilliant idea, because they're amassed right now and they're all different. And, I mean, if you want just a little something like that, I don't think that's really bringing people together, but I think it's, it's a nice touch. I think just talking to each other would be fantastic.
Thank you, Alan Cole.
Well, I can think of one, that's Blackburn Tennis Center. Totally revitalize that, that would bring all the tennis players together in that universe. The other one would be, that you could do on a reasonably quick basis, would be put playgrounds in, in Perfect Hammer Park, that are good and would bring families with kids back to the lake that are doing Ashford Park and other areas, because there's no playground here. Lindbergh Park would be the same way, is utilize the park square, get more people out, talk to each other, and interacting.
Thank you. Kevin Fitzpatrick.
I don't have any, any great more to project than that. I really want to stress the need for strategic planning for all our parks and everything we're doing in the city, and that we need to engage in this process over time and bring a lot of people from across the city into this project to, to have input into it and make it something that's real. I, I really don't like ad hoc decision-making. I, I really, really, you know, a certain amount of board trustees at Dover Park, that's how we turn that institution around, by getting away from ad hoc decision-making into strategic planning and into a mission-focused philosophy. And I think that's what we have to do here, be mission-focused. We want to make Brookhaven the most desirable address in the metropolitan area. How do we get there? That's the standard we should measure everything against.
Thank you. Kevin Metz.
Yeah, I think that we're all going to be in for quite a surprise when we actually get into this budget and realize that we have a lot of expenses that we didn't really know that we were going to have, and that we have a lot less revenue than maybe we thought we were going to get. And so what we're going to have to do is we're going to have to prioritize the things that are really, really important, like police, fire, roads, and stuff like that, and then get into this other stuff later. I mean, one of the things that we're looking at is, you know, we're going to have to have a new location for City Hall. There's lots of concepts and ideas floating around about the best way to spend our money on, on a new City Hall. I personally have the opinion that we don't need to go out and spend more money to build a brand-new City Hall that looks fantastic, that we can take the, the buildings that we already have available that are not being used and convert those into the City Hall. And maybe as municipal, talk about breaking workplace, maybe a new municipality center would be some place that we could actually have everyone come to, because they're going to have to come in and pay their taxes there, so they might as well, maybe cook the other way out.
Thank you very much. How would you respond to a request to post the Ten Commandments in city offices? Alan Cole.
I would go to my legal department. I would say, "Thank you for your input."
But?
Government can't be in the business of choosing between religions. I mean, that's the fundamental, the First Amendment of the United States Constitution won't be established from a religion. And, and the government should not be choosing a religion that has the Ten Commandments versus a religion that doesn't have the Ten Commandments. It should not pick sides. And so I would not post the Ten Commandments.
Kevin Metz.
Well, Kevin has the same problem that I do, and that is we both went to law school. And in law school, you are forced to read the Constitution and you're forced to study the Constitution, and you bring a lot of cases that come out of the Constitution. And one process that I know is a bit for me, I'm sure for Kevin and anyone else who's a fan of the Constitution, is the Constitution is fantastic. It's probably the greatest human accomplishment of all time. And one of the tenets of the Constitution is, you know, the division, the separation between the church and the state. And Kevin's right, we can't have the state deciding that, that this religious doctrine is okay, whereas this religion's doctrine is not. So I would not be in favor of combining those two things in any way.
Rebecca Chase Williams.
Well, I think lawyers just, I mean, I can't be a positive of religion of all places as much as I may personally try to strive to live by the Ten Commandments, or maybe I personally want them at my house, in my office. I don't think it's appropriate to post them in City Hall.
Kevin Fitzpatrick, you were mentioned by name, but not necessarily in a way that required, but where you're comfortable in that.
I'm very comfortable.
Please tell us your plan to solicit feedback from residents in your district, and in what ways you plan to be fair and harsh on them and acting on behalf of your constituents. And we will begin with Kevin Fitzpatrick.
Um, you know, I try to be fair with my children, and even, and even none of them ever think I am being fair, you know, when they're, when they're growing up, it's always tricky. I think the important thing is to listen to people. I mean, I, I've been getting a real education walking around the district, walking outdoors and talking to people. People have been telling me what's been going on. I mean, I learned about that vacant house in Holton, Redington, you know, what nuisance that is. I learned about roads that are abandoned, I learned about crime, I learned about air conditioners being stolen on East Nancy Creek behind houses. I learned about cars being stolen at Doggo. It just seems that there's a lot going on that we're not sharing, you know? And I think that's one of the great advantages of the city of Brookhaven, we can have a vehicle and an opportunity to share all this information, so that we can handle it better.
Thank you very much, Kevin Metz.
Well, you know, we're all going door-to-door by now and talking to everybody, and so that's a great way to get information out. And honestly, once we start the city up, none of us, none of us are going to have time to go door-to-door and talk to you. So my plan would be to use things like social media, like Facebook, have a Facebook District One page, where anybody could go on the Facebook District One page and post comments, so they can see those threads. I also plan to keep my own personal website, i'llkevametz.com, to communicate with you that way. And, you know, the internet is a great way to communicate these days, it's opened up the entire world to communication. So that would be my, my preference would be to use social media and email and things like that, but then also have town meetings or District One meetings, which will, this would be a great location to do something like that.
Thank you very much. Rebecca Chase Williams.
Well, I envision, like the others, a combination of old media and new media, town hall meetings, newsletters, but we're so fortunate, you know, we live in this digital age, you know, emails, Facebook. I'm sorry, I'm not reading, sorry, I'm not reading my tweets. I will try to learn how to do that, maybe you can do it that way. But the city itself, if you've gone on the websites of Sandy Springs, Dunwoody, they are fantastic. There is so much information, it's so transparent, it's so easy to find out. The nuts and bolts of the different departments, the budgets, and I envision that we too will have a completely open and transparent and robust website to let people know what's going on, when the meetings are. It's going to be fantastic.
Thank you very much. Alan Cole.
Well, I'm going to agree, and agree as would the rest, social media in the city of Dunwoody, in Sandy Springs, in Farmers Galve, or whatever. And I, I think it's fantastic that if you live in Dunwoody, you can find out when your street speed comes to pay by just going online, you're automatically, you can find that out. And that's the kind of information the city of Brookhaven should be putting out too. We should be that up to date, that well-organized, and all the council members should have a webpage on the city. And we'd all have our own personal Ten Commandments, as long as we're still having coffee at the Starbucks and meeting, meeting the neighbors and the constituents, and seeing them in restaurants, and seeing them on the local scene at all the events.
Thank you very much. All right. What do you predict the most contentious issue will be between our district and the other districts? What do you predict the most contentious issue will be between our district and the other districts? We will begin with Kevin Metz.
Well, I'll keep going back to this, I know it's a boring topic, but again, it's the budget. I mean, we're going to have, we have more parks, more park space up here in District One. They have more crime down in District Four. So we're going to have to come, come to some agreement that, okay, we're going to use a little bit more police down in District Four, and maybe before that, we're going to be able to use a little bit more park money up here in District One. So it will be coming together and meeting of the minds of city council members, and you're going to have to have people in there that are used to giving and taking. So I think I've been a pretty good negotiator and agreeable person over the years, especially with my family background. So my, my thought would be, you know, it is going to be a give-and-take and a, and a sort of negotiating, negotiating as we go over those resources, because we are going to be vying for these, these same resources that aren't limited resources.
Thank you. Rebecca Chase Williams.
You know, one of the best pieces of advice that I got from another city council person over in Sandy Springs was, "Make sure that you really, even though I'm, you know, we have districts and we will have a District One representative, you need to really look out for the betterment of the entire city." And I would hope that all the city council people will come together in that spirit. I think what we not liked about the current county government, even in the US government, is that everybody trying to get their piece in the pot. You know, if Elaine Boyer did something up here, then they want something in Decatur County, and vice versa. And I think we need to make our decisions based on facts and information. Who needs it the most, or where are the roads the worst? Let's, I'm just really looking at the city as a whole and, and really serving all the people. I will, I will serve District One, of course, but let's not get into this vying for resources between, between districts.
Thank you very much. Alan Cole.
Well, I think it boils down to strategic planning again and teamwork. You've got to keep the goal, the city itself needs to function, and each district's going to have different requirements that advance quicker than other districts. But I think if everybody looks at it, as the city as a whole and what happens down in District Four will affect District One, it'll affect us by money, by operations, and comfort of life. So hopefully, we'll have a city council that can work together, and those issues will need work ethic.
And Kevin Fitzpatrick.
Well, I hope we don't get into forced trading of Brookhaven City Council. I mean, one of the great things I like about this is a nonpartisan election, you know, we're deciding about ideology, this is about pragmatism, this is about building the best Brookhaven we can possibly have. And I hope that we don't get into the politics of recent thing and the politics of, of I'm pulling the lever up. I hope that, that we can work together, and I believe that we can. To the extent that, that people want to get contentious about allocation of resources, I, you know, I've always found that keeping an open mind and listening is the best way to overcome obstacles and come into agreement. And I, I really don't want to predict that we're going to have a big disaster, or I don't want to believe that everybody will respond to the better end of their venture. But, you know, then again, you know, I'm Irish and fighting is what we like to do, so.
And that concludes the question and answer portion of our program. A bigger round of applause for all of them. I'm sure there's a delay, I'd like to tell you that it's because he picks up to the side of one candidate, doesn't it? All right. So we will conclude this portion of the program with...
I was going to, the questions that did get asked, you know.
Right. We're going to conclude this portion of the program with two-minute closing statements by the candidates, and then there will be a twenty-minute mix and mingle, correct?
Yes.
At which time those questions can be asked. All right. So the two-minute closing statements, the candidates drew lots. And first will be Kevin Metz.
Well, I'll tell you, something happened to me the other day. Someone called me a word I had never heard before, referring to myself, and really upset me. They called me a politician, and, you know, the effete is the wrong person, please excuse me, but, you know, I, I have a great disdain for politicians, you know, because they lie to me to tell me what they say. They tell me whatever I want to hear, and then they're trying to figure out how to take my money. That's their material, these politicians. But, you know, I have to tell myself that some of my favorite people in history were politicians, if you want to think of it that way. Guys like George Washington, James Madison, Alexander Hamilton, John Adams, my favorite, Sam Adams. You know, all those guys, all those guys, you know, called politicians perfect, really. I can look at them, really, they were silver servants. You know, somehow along the way, this idea of, of being a public servant became vilified to wear down with politicians, you know? I'm doing this because I live here, my business is here, I'm raising my children here, I love this area, I love my neighbors, I love Brookhaven. So for me, my reason for being here is really to, to assert to my neighbors in the spirit of those original guys. Thank you. Thank you.
Alan Cole.
Yes. And I think that's same with us. But I want to thank Lisa Toy, Marwan, and all the homeowners who came to this meeting to participate. We need that. Whoever's elected, we need to participate. We need your input. That's how to keep the city this way, right. If you're not watching it, it'll disappear. That's the nature of the beast. So stay active. I think everybody, we really appreciate you coming here and listening to us, and I hope you...
Thank you. Rebecca Chase Williams.
Let me just share with you what is my vision of the city. You know, I envision Brookhaven that is going to be united by our shared values, by our high standards. It's, it's been so fun going door-to-door to meet people. We have a very educated electorate, and it's going to be just, I think we have high standards and we're going to come together on that. We will be enriched by our work. I think that's actually an asset that we have, you know, at Dunwoody and some of the other communities. And we turn that, we're going to protect our property values, because I think one of our most important assets are our neighbors and our homes. And on the other hand, I want it to be a place where business wants to come, to create jobs, to enhance the community of life. And of course, one of my main goals is to keep taxes low. I'm, I'm with these guys about, I think we already played, played, made plenty of taxes. I think most of our governments have a spending problem, a revenue problem. We've just got to make the numbers right. We need to spend wisely and smartly, get our, get our bank for the buck. I want to be a better steward of our tax dollars when we see Cat County, County D. I envision a city where we're going to act really responsibly, where instead of never seeing the patrol car, you actually can know the name of the patrol, and people come through your neighborhood all the time. I see parks that are just going to be so vibrant and so fun. Our children will be engaged for hours, they'll be able to walk and play. The leagues will, will continue to thrive, and hopefully not harm everybody's agreements. We're going to have roads that are approved, we're going to have zoning that fully reflects the values that we want. And again, we only have one chance to launch the city, and I'm determined that we've just got to give it up. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. And Kevin Fitzpatrick.
Well, thank you. Again, this is going to really engage the audience, and I really appreciate they all been active, and all of us, because it's not the easiest thing to do, to get up and talk to everybody, and anybody who's got a case. It's a whole lot easier for me to talk to a jury than people actually know. I think we have a lot of opportunity here. Luckily enough, I'm a big fan of police, and I, I see the police department that takes responsibility for all the neighborhood watches and the police people that keeps it up, that keeps it going, because our security is better than ours. You know, we lock our doors, we have an alarm system. A lot of people, I found out, have parked their dogs. You know, we have, we have a higher presence of police in the neighborhood, we have community watches, that, where there's a dedicated person within the police department whose job it is to keep that up and, and to keep those people talking to one another. I think that... I think that on budgeting and balancing the budget, it's a matter of focus and it's a matter of staying on your mission. At Ogleport University, seven years ago, we were in deep financial problems. We were at risk of losing our accreditation because, not because of our academic program, but because we couldn't pay the bills. And we were stuck with bad financial processes. And we worked very, very hard to turn that ship around with strategic planning and with a focus on balancing the budget and keeping with your mission. Balancing the budget, I felt, is a lot of saying no to some really good ideas. And, and that is what it takes, is you have to know that you're going to have a lot of good ideas, and you've got to stay focused on where you're going and stay focused on the mission. We turned that institution around by doing that. And, and that is, that is the type of management that I'd like to bring to the city of Brookhaven.
Thank you very much. I think we can all agree that it's impressive that we could produce four candidates of this council. And to thank our timer and our backup panelists. And thank each of you for being so engaged. There was no way we were going to get to all the questions that we had unless we stayed here until ten o'clock actually due this morning.